We'll start the meeting with a pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the South Burlington School Board meeting. And we'll start with comments from the public regarding items that are not on the agenda. And seeing none, we will look to for amendments to the agenda. I think we have a couple, David?
Yes, we do. So item 10, consider and approve the school calendar. Is this going to be a discussion only?
Okay.
No action. And under item number 12, executive limitation policy and specific to 2.4 financial conditions and activities audit will not be occurring tonight. Okay?
All right. Any other amendments to the agenda? All right, with those two changes, we'll move...
I'm sorry, are we going to have another executive session?
Oh, yeah, we should add, we're going to continue our reopen an executive session after we adjourn the regular meeting.
Yeah, for the purposes of collective bargaining.
For purposes of legal matter and discussion of collecting bargaining. Great. All right, let's start with the item number five, city-school collaboration.
So, actually, this week Elizabeth and I did have our, finally had a meeting after we've had some cancellations. And that was with Pam McKenzie, Tom Hubbard, and Kevin Dorn, and myself and Elizabeth. And the meeting was, I think, productive in conversation around, number one, our next steering committee meeting, which is set for April 9th. And the topic that came up was our continuation of the need to be mindful of master planning, financial stewardship, collaboration. And so that will be one item that will be a major focus for our work. We do want to connect with a couple folks to talk a little bit more about how we might go about soliciting additional feedback from our community, and this is a follow-up to the voter information work that we've done and reviewed, and to use that as a, kind of a stepping off point to look at how that involvement can be fully engaged. Again, I think there was quite a bit of discussion around the most recent budget outcome. And again, obviously, that was reflected on the updated voting information. But, you know, certainly some concerns and opportunities around how we can help our city, you know, continue to provide good services, both school and city. So, that was really, I think, the major focus for us. Our meetings are not extremely long. They're just a little bit under an hour, and that's kind of by design.
Yeah, and also, the April 9th meeting will include a reorganization because the city is up to chair the steering committee. So, the agenda will be basically reorganization, discussion of voter information, and a discussion of moving forward on master planning and financial stewardship for both the school and city.
I don't know if anybody has any questions on that, but...
All right, good. All right, agenda item number six, an update on the status of the methadone clinic?
So, for those that were not in attendance, the Supreme Court heard our oral arguments at the Vermont Law School this past Monday, March 17th. And our case was presented by Pietro Lynn. And at this point, again, we had a 15-minute opportunity for our oral arguments, as did the Howard Center. And the likelihood of us hearing is unknown. We don't know exactly when that will be. I did ask for some more clarity around that. It could be tomorrow, or it could be three months from now. And that's just based on kind of the process and the way that works. So, as the board knows, there was a fair amount of media coverage for this. There was some Burlington Free Press article that was put out. There was a Fox 44 short interview. And my understanding also, there was a, there was a follow-up with Fox 44 here on the site, interviewing a couple of the parents on the property here at the Frederick Cage Tullow Middle School during the end of the day.
Today?
It wasn't today, it was Monday, Monday afternoon. And so, again, we wanted to make you aware of that. So, I don't know what other questions folks have, or...
All right. Seeing none, we'll move on to the number seven, update on the proposed grade-five transition.
So, I'm gonna, as I've said before, we're going to keep this on as a reoccurring item on the agenda. And actually, I have Joanne here. She's here for another report, but Joanne is one of the co-chairs of the steering committee. And so, this is a great opportunity for me to, number one, thank her for her work. We've got a lot of people that are putting in time and effort to this, to this cause and looking at whether it is a viable opportunity for our kids to come over and, and do the due diligence on that work. So, maybe, Joanne, you can give just a little bit of an update. I know a meeting is coming up again tomorrow night.
Yeah, we've had, we've had two meetings so far. We're doing a carousel meeting format. So, steering committee meets for half an hour, and then we have our infrastructure, curriculum, instruction, and the community outreach. And it's very, there's a lot of participation. So, each committee has an administrator and a parent co-chair. So, we're really trying to make sure that the, the community and the schools are coming together to really answer the questions. There's a open comment question tab on the website. We've been getting a lot of questions, which we haven't really been able to answer a lot of them yet, so we're going to try and put out a response after we talk this Thursday around the data that we're collecting around those. But there's a lot of community participation and discussion. It's a very, I said to David, it's challenging for me because I'm usually like working on things that have like a structured way of going about it, but it's a very organic process where people are really bringing their ideas, and we're listening and looking for data and trying to figure out what the best course of action is. So, it's, it's good. It's a good process. So...
Joanne, do we have a mechanism to let... Community members who are sending questions into that forum to let them know at least it was received, if not responded to?
We're gonna do that. I don't know if they know it was received. That's a good question. I didn't set up the Google questionnaire. But we do talk, we've talked a lot about them at the meetings, and our minutes are posted, and all those minutes are posted. But they didn't get, they don't get a personal response.
Okay.
Well, our plan is to answer each of the questions, but there's been so many, and they're so complicated that we haven't really been able to...
I'm just thinking if there's a time gap between somebody sending, at least to let them know.
We're gonna do that tomorrow, hopefully. That's my plan.
Received and working to respond.
Right.
Yeah.
Pay attention to our webpage.
I can talk to Kristen about just having that response go to them, too. So, I'll do that.
So, I know there's other questions, you know, obviously, as Joanne has outlined, there's questions. And I think that's really, really important, and we're trying to make sure that we, we follow, you know, a process by responding. I also know, though, that I think it's really important around the decision-making process. And I think that's been one that we've heard around, so these committees are doing their work. They're going to provide me with, with what, you know, and then what am I going to provide you? And I think there's a need, there's a level of clarity that's needed around what that's going to be so that the committees, or the community, or you know what that's gonna, what that's, what I'm going to give you, what's going to be given to me, and how we're going to inform the public. Currently, it's not 100% defined. It was a committee structure that fed into the steering committee through a process by which they would then render their report to me. I would in turn receive their report, digest their report, and think about in the, what would be in the best possible outcome for the students, and make a, make a report then to you, given the facts in which I've received. And then for you to be able to say, you know, we need more, we need less, you know, and to be able to make a decision.
Are you including a recommendation in that?
I would be, I would be including a recommendation. And again, I think we, I need to probably outline that a little bit clearer for you so that when we get to June, you know, that there's a process by which you can feel good about. So...
Yeah, I think from a, I know, and we've kind of talked about this with other processes, and this isn't so much a reflection for the board, I'll just speak for myself on this, but really going to be looking for the committees to come back with, what are the clear and elevating objectives? So, we've had this discussion of, there should be an expectation that we will be better off as a district for having made this transition. And then really looking for the evidence that objectives, whatever those clear and elevating objectives are, that, evidence that those objectives are being achieved. And that's really through our normal monitoring process. Or we're accustomed to developing some kind of monitoring that would look at that. I don't know if anyone else had any other...
Just, I mean, I would add to that, that given the, the public scrutiny and such of, of this decision, that it has to be, a clear statement, clear evidence has to be presented that, that making this fairly dramatic move, at least for a lot of people, they believe it's very dramatic, is going to advance the objectives of the, of the district. I mean, it can't be like a 50-50, and this is the way it should go. But that's also just...
Any other comments, questions, public?
Just sort of a brief comment, I guess. I just wanted to underscore the need for what you were talking about. I think what, I think it was Stuart Weiss was talking in the steering subcommittee a couple of weeks ago about this volume of questions that are coming in. Some are barbs masquerading as questions. Many could fairly be lumped together. Those are all good reasons, but I think there's an expectation on the part of the parents that they're writing in, and there's going to be some response.
Right.
Just to say on the website, you know, it's going to take a week, or here's how we're going to do it, or, you know, it wouldn't even have to be as part of the form that you submit on. It could just be sort of a blanket paragraph of, here's how it might work, you know?
Okay. Do it on...
Yeah, and just thinking about it because all of a sudden, there's five or six meetings left until June, you know? Doesn't seem very far away anymore, and so all this process stuff, you know, it's sort of urgent to get it worked out.
Right.
That's helpful. And I, and I'm certainly very open to, if you, if you and board members, as you continue to be thinking about this, want to send me some other things, that certainly would be welcome as well.
Thanks. All right, we'll move on to our student representative report. We missed you last month, or last meeting.
She was in France.
That's right.
Well, that's exciting.
Yeah. So, as we were saying earlier today, we had talent night this weekend, which we both participated in. And it was really, really fun, even though we didn't win. But yeah, I'm excited for next year. But it was, yeah, a lot of fun, and just brought all the team, all the classes together. We also have...
Wait, who won?
The freshmen.
The beginners luck.
Also, we have the CDC Career Job Expo, which is coming up April 1st, which many of you probably know, but a lot of businesses come in to South Burlington High School. And a lot of students can talk with them, make connections, and it's a really great experience for them. But that's coming up, and they're already signing up for that. And, yeah, it's one of, like, I think it's the 15th, 15th year, 15th, 15th year. So, that's pretty special.
How many hours on that?
12 to 2.
And at the high school, the outdoor, I mean, the gym?
And it is in your, it is in your announcement packet, too.
But yeah, so that's really exciting, and it's a pretty big event. So, we're looking forward to that.
The student council is holding our annual spring fling next week. So, we have a lot of activities going on. There's extended FaceTime from 10 to 11. And we have like gym activities, non-gym activities. And then there's going to be a pep rally. So, it'll definitely be a lot of fun. We're really looking forward to that. We're getting all the details sorted. And then next week, the TIE Japanese students are coming from Japan. So, that'll be really cool. And one of the things we're planning for spring fling is an origami day. So, we're hoping to get them involved, which we think would be kind of cool. And then the TIE France kids came back, like, two weeks ago.
How was the trip?
It was fun.
What was the highlight?
I thought Paris was pretty cool. We all, I think we all liked that part probably the most. I mean, the home stays were really nice, too. But our school is a lot better, like, in every way.
Expand on that a little bit.
Well, they speak English.
What's good about our school in comparison?
Well, I, well, I think we all, like, something to keep in mind is that we come from like a pretty privileged, like, school district. So, that has like a huge impact. Things that we, I guess, take for granted, like, we have janitors every day and soap in the bathrooms. They don't have that. It's kind of freaky.
Conditions of the school are very different, like hallway, you know, hallways, even the physical things are different, aren't they?
Our school's a lot nicer. And then, I guess, just like the system in general, and like, like, we offer more classes, and you can pick your classes, whereas there, you're like scheduled into everything at the beginning of the year, and there's no option to like change out of, I mean, it's really hard to change out of that once you're in. You can't really like change teachers or anything. I feel like there's a lot more support here. All around better. And then, like, after our presentations, we asked the French students which system they think they would prefer. I'm like, American, what they know of it versus theirs, and every single one of them said the American system. So, I thought that was kind of interesting.
Co-curricular type of activities, or the, like, any, any activities are not done in this part of the school, are they? They're all part of the town, right? Is that, is that...
Yeah, like sports, would, you would join like a club outside of the school. They don't really have clubs or anything like non-sporty, I don't really think. Different.
Happy to be home.
Yeah.
Thank you. All right, superintendent's report.
So, I have four items here, the request or proposal on the audit for teacher performance, and the schools out, and governance update, as well as legislative update. So, again, I, I think at this point, just want to indicate, again, I'm wanting to be clear about where we are and make sure that I'm, I really have some delineated steps. I own some issues around this process and where we are. It's been, it's been quite a lengthy process with really no yet known outcome. One of the things that I feel compelled that can happen, and that is more on the quantitative work, and that is, that part can be done by me, my staff, to provide the board with kind of the quantitative data, which has been outlined in this. And I think that can happen right off. So, regardless of where the board wants to go with whether we go back out, or we do it internally, as indicated here, I think we could do that. I think the other part is, you know, in my, in my notes, I also indicated, because I met with a subgroup, and in this case, Diane, myself, and Karen Dantcher met together and talked about the process. And there were some things in there that I think need to be corrected, and that was really Diane's, was wonderful to have her perspective on that, but it was a whole board discussion. And I kind of indicated in this, in my report, that it was, you know, Diane's duty was to come back, and that's, that was incorrect. So, I apologize for that miswording, Diane.
Thanks, David. So, you know, we did come up with some potential action steps. And one, you know, was the, the quantitative report. And discussing that as a board, like, what data points would be important to include in that? So, if we give David direction to do that, all of us can sort of agree on what, what points of data we would, we would want to know. So, I think that's important. We talked about scaling back on the RFP that went out, and then resending it. And we talked about an option that would be an internal audit, done by, you know, done in-house, and then have an external reviewer take a look at it for process, and just review it for process. And so, that was just another new, newer idea that we, I don't think we talked about before. So, they're just points of discussion for the board.
So, to kind of recalibrate where we were at, and this has been a discussion that's been ongoing, we had board discussion on the scope of the RFP, which was really going to focus on, are we doing the right thing? So, it was really an evaluation of our current performance evalu, an audit of our current performance evaluation system to basically say, are we in compliance with our own system? And the second part of it, which actually I think the board made a decision to put on hold, was, are we doing the right things? Or are we doing things right, was the first part. Are we doing the right things? Is really the aspect of, are we evaluating the right things? And there is an initiative that kind of, after the beginning of our discussions quite a while ago, is an initiative at the state level to revise the, the evaluation system, I believe.
Yes.
And in fact, I think just today, the standards board has eliminated the IP...
IPDP.
DP. And, and portfolios, right?
Well, they're, they're moving to something totally different. And so, they're, yeah.
It's hot off the press.
They haven't told us yet. We're the ones, yeah.
Yeah, I got it on my cellphone, so... Yeah, and I have no idea how that got to me. But, at any rate, there is a state initiative that's really looking at evaluating, or reevaluating, performance assessment systems. So, we've, I think we, the board felt there was more of an opportunity to piggyback off of the state initiative relative to anything we might have done on our own in terms of, are we doing the right things? But, that said, we still agreed that we needed a baseline of, are we doing things right based on our current performance assessment system? So, that said, I think there's a couple of discussion points that Diane has brought up. The quantitative assessment, it sounds like that could be done. It sounds like there might need some discussion on specific data we'd want included on that. And probably, equally importantly, David, would be a date that we could expect to see that by. There's, now, there's been a couple things highlighted in David's report. Do you want to cover those, or? I don't know if they came out of the committee, or...
They did, and I, I know in the questions, actually, that, that we've talked about, they're also there. So, again, in the next steps that were discussed, those were the three possible actions identified. And I think, Diane, you have some corrections to this, so please, you know, pipe in on that. I think, most specifically, and you already highlighted those, Elizabeth, a qualitative, a quantitative report by the district to look at the numbers that were due, evaluations that is, and the actual numbers completed. And then the scope, to look at the scope of the previous RFP, and to possibly reduce that and send it out again. Again, these can be done individually or altogether. And then the district to either complete its own internal audit of the teacher performance practice and have an external reviewer, as Diane said. So, I'm, Diane, I think what we did is there was a capture by me and a capture, reevaluation capture by Diane. And so, what I just articulated, I think, is the, is that corrected capture.
Yeah, and I think, I think where I'm focusing is on the first recommendation, which is the internal review, which sounds like it can be done immediately.
Correct, right. I want to be careful with immediately, but yes, I would say by the next board meeting would be a place, a time where you would be able to see that.
Okay, so that's, that's the timeframe we're talking about. And then I think, I know one of the questions I had, is what's, what's recommended so far is the number of evaluations that were due and those that are completed, the number of persons eligible in a cycle, the number of reviews by building, and then any, any outstanding reviews and follow-up process. So, it's a very quantitative assessment of just numbers of reviews and kind of where they are in the process. One question I have is, what's the period of time that we would get this information for? Can we get like three years of history, or...
I think that was one of the questions that came up. What would the board want to see? One year, two years, three years? Another thing came up, and it was, you know, would, would the board want to know how many were in performance plans? And there was some discussion about whether, whether we could do that or not, because we wouldn't want to have any information that was identifiable in any way.
Yeah, or, yeah.
So, there's some, there may be some confidentiality issues with getting that information.
If it gets down to the smaller, smaller, like, by building or something, right? But that could be maybe rolled up. I, I just want to be conscious of not, not, you know, making that known somewhere. But that, that was a concern that, that we just talked about, around those that are on a performance improvement plan. But I, I think the question then was from you, Elizabeth, on when, either number of years, and when could we expect that? Was that what your specific question?
Yeah, I think it's by the next board meeting.
Yeah, I think if, I, I would be hesitant to say, I gotta be careful about the number of years. You know, if we go back X number of years, that's obviously going to take more time. So, I think I absolutely can provide you, you know, information. I don't want to guarantee that it will be back, you know, X number of years. Let me give you some, at least a year or two, and then see where we can go from there.
Well, is there any, is there any reason why there'd be big variation year to year?
Well, remember, there are, in times where you have a staff that are moving through the, the cycle, you can have off-years and on-years. And one of the things that I did authorize was with the administrators to look at, what I'm going to say, is rescheduling some of them. Because there was, there were some years when we first, and again, part of the attention was, we got to get them, we want to get them done. And there's new employees that come on board. And so, you have a, you know, a clump of a higher volume of teachers in one year than in the, than the next year. So, that's part of that, that conversation. So, you can get varying numbers. Ideally, we'd like to see that kind of balance out so that you aren't doing 30 evaluations this year. I'm exaggerating. Picking a number, that is. And then next year, doing two, right?
But I think that's a, that's a reason why we need to go back, you know, at least three years.
Yeah, I think this should be a historical perspective. And then in the future, it should be in the context of a monitoring report on a regular basis.
Right. I mean, yeah, if you even can go back further than three years, that would be preferable. And I think also with regards to performance, people on performance plans, I like rolling it up to the school level, but I'd also like to understand what the results were from a performance plan. What was, was there a dismissal? Was, was it, everything was worked out, or whatever other categories? And I don't think that, you know, will get...
Yeah, so maybe we can, you know, let me, let me just think about that. Again, it could be performance and, you know, improvement plans, and then in some categories, maybe.
Right, yeah. Just, well, the outcomes, essentially.
Is there any level of employee segmentation that would be relevant to an audit of the current system? Like, new employees need to be evaluated every six months for a period of two years? I don't know that that's true, but...
Yeah, no, we, for all of our employee groups, I mean, you're talking specifically here. You know, we have different, different times for, you know, they're needing to be checked in on, evaluated, et cetera.
If there's, if there is a meaningful way to segment employees in doing this retrospective, I think that would be helpful in understanding our, our level of compliance with the current system. As it may highlight, we do a great job with, you know, entry-level folks, but we sometimes, you know, are, are late on our more senior staff, for instance. I, I don't know what the outcome would be, but...
Yeah. Okay.
So, it sounds like we'd, we'd like to get at least a three-year retrospective, and you'll figure out whether that can be done by the next board meeting. We should expect something by the next board meeting. There is an interest in understanding the number of performance improvement plans, and then the outcome of those, and then some kind of employee segmentation. And I know, I don't know if this is doable in a retrospective, but is there, is there any way to, is there any roll-up of sort of common areas of strength or developmental need that shows up in a, an assessment like this?
Probably would be hard. I mean, in general, more of a narrative.
That's more in the narrative?
Yeah, so, you know, it would be hard for me to call that out.
Okay.
I mean, let me, let me think about how I could, you know, the common trend.
That's something we asked in the RFP, and I just, I can't recall if the evaluations, like, had a number system that might have highlighted...
Well, there's, you know, there's...
Classroom management, or whatever.
Yep, there's, remember, there's the four domains, and you know, one of the domains, you know, classroom environment, right? Three, category three. So, it has a rubric, essentially. We don't put numbers to them, but it has some quantifiable descriptors of, of where...
But the system wouldn't have a roll-up like in an annual period?
No.
Okay. And then also by building. So, the way you, what you've put on here would be person's eligibility, cycle number of views by building, and outstanding reviews and follow-up process would still be part of that, right?
Yeah, I just want to be careful of the number by building. I'm, you know, I think, I want to make sure that you see the total number that are eligible.
Right.
This is a district. I'm worried about then it boils down into then I'm getting into, you know, areas of concern that might be, you know what I mean?
Well, I think we're, I think what we're looking for is building-specific compliance with the current system. I don't think there's any identifiable info... compliance with the current system. I don't think there's any identifiable information in absolute num- or in just in, in absolute number.
Yeah, I was just thinking that, you know, keeping it more total teachers, total, total, total numbers.
Well, we, yeah, the RFP though called for the building, but it was also, it wasn't just the numbers. It was also the consistency of evaluations between buildings. So I doubt you can get that with a, with a quantitative study. But at a minimum, there, there might be sort of an assessment of building compliance with, with just the eligibility and, and follow-up.
Okay, let me, I mean, I, I understand what you want. And I don't know that I'm being, and I'm just trying to think through all the different lenses, you know, around what I'm going to put together for you, so. Again, we have, we have, I've been provided a lot of information, you know, in my time. So I know it's, it can be, can be rolled up and available to you, so.
So it sounds like that's kind of a doable first step in a relatively short period of time. And would the board like to table the discussion on the, the balance of the recommendations? In terms of revising the audit and going out and then looking at some kind of a hybrid model of an internal audit with an external review?
No, I, I think we should figure out something sooner rather than later. I mean, it's been waiting an awful long time. I, I would think that, I, is it of any benefit for this next step to, I understand because of scheduling problems, there wasn't an ability to loop in potential auditors into a conversation for how to modify the RFP. Would seem that that would be a good next step, or, or is that fruitless? Have you talked to who needs to be talked to?
We reviewed some feedback from one, one potential.
Right. Are there others that either we know could respond to such an audit or, or did?
We could, I mean, there were many inquiries. And so we could go back and say, hey, could you help us refine the, our, our proposal so it's more, you know, something more, you know, doable? Whether it be by them or not, but I mean, that, that could certainly happen.
No, I, I probably have asked this question before, but it's been a while, so I, so I don't remember. Have, have we contacted the V S B A or, or the National School Board Association to ask for, for leads for such work?
I, not the national.
A good next step as well. I mean, Vermont's a
Small.
Pretty small market for such things. But, and I don't see why it would have to be a Ver- you know, if we're not finding anybody in Vermont, let's extend broader. And probably the easiest way to do that is to look at V S B A. Or the National School Board Association. I just drove by their headquarters like when they're in winter break. I should have stopped in and asked.
It's good, we can ask.
It's in Alexandria, Virginia.
I think there are potential people here in Vermont though that have expressed interest. I'm just.
We've had, we've had a good number of those expressed interest.
So I'm, I'm missing something because I thought at our last meeting when we asked for this update and that you guys were going to meet with those people and specifically talk to them about, or by phone or whatever. So that just wasn't, you didn't, weren't able to.
Communication from one, so. Information went out and said, hey, we'd like to meet with you. There is, I'd have gotten another response now that I would, they said they would be available. So I, I just don't want to get into this weight game. I think it may be better to just push out and say, hey, could you help us refine this? And, and, and then we'll push it out and let them respond if that's your desire to do that.
I mean, it sounds like it would be a helpful next step to have kind of the committee that, I mean, Diane, if you're available, or maybe another board member and Karen at least, or David, if you're available, to sit with a couple of these interested. It, it would be kind of a buy invitation, but if you've got one party interested, if the person who replied in writing wants to sit down face, I think these need to be face to face. Maybe try to get three parties that have the qualifications to do this and say, look, this is what we were trying to do. We didn't get a lot of response. Can you give us some feedback on how to audit our performance evaluation system? And how you might be able to help with that? And it, it would be somewhat of a, kind of a pre-RFP. But what we may find is that we, we identify a potential partner outside of that RFP process too. And, and I don't know what our obligation is to follow an RFP if it's unique like this.
We're inquiring about information.
Is that we're talking with people who expressed an interest and I, I would like to know why they didn't go the next step. What was it about our RFP? Were there certain things about it they thought, oh, I can do that? But that I can't do. And that would be helpful if we're going to, you know, scale it back and, and change it.
So I think that would be good. My, my only other thing would be is that, and I think there's some concern around, you know, we, we, we put it out in the, in the papers, but whether it was widely enough, in, in what I would say perhaps with the, with the committee would be to also reserve the right to say, I know, and, and do some cold calling with people that we do know and say, you didn't respond, but could you come in and meet with, you know?
Oh, I would say if we, if we think, I mean, to me, any meeting we would have face to face in a, in a timely manner would inform this process. Whether it's somebody we know should have been interested or somebody who took a pass or even somebody who does this for a living in another area. And maybe just that we didn't know if the skills were transferable.
Right, like, and, and help us to hone in on this, yeah, yeah, that's good.
So is the board comfortable with kind of David following through on the, the quantitative assessment side? And then setting up meetings with, you know, at least three potential partners to reevaluate the scope of the RFP?
Is there any, in, in the event that I, for scheduling issues, in the event I can't make it, is there a backup person that would be interested?
If we can become a committee, then I could also go ahead and just make contact when I'm out at the next V S B A meeting. Since I have to, they'll give me something to talk to them about.
Were you lacking for things to talk about?
Well, they're talking about the governance structure change and it's all supervisory unions, and I understand it, but it's not so much our issue.
Good, thank you.
So the schools out, again, I just wanted to provide some information on the schools out program. And as I reported to you, and again, Joanne's here again for this, but I'm really proud of our efforts, particularly walking into the summer and looking at what I'm going to call melded service plan around schools out and our summer school program through special education. So I'm, I'm pleased for that. Also, the schools out program is going through a different process. As you know, this has been one that's been an exhaustive process by which people sign up. We've had people have camped out for more than twelve hours to get in, and so there's a, a better system. And, and Lee has articulated, you know, some, some logical next steps around that. And so, again, I don't necessarily want to read that all to you, but again, I think we're in pretty good shape. And Joanne, I don't, I know Joanne and Lee and, and her staff have worked really hard in preparation for what I think is going to be a really quality service this summer for kids. And I don't know if you wanted to add anything to that.
Just that we've always, we're always trying to build an engaging, inclusive program for students that have to come in for extra work. And Lee and I really brainstormed over a number of months how we could use schools out to bring our special needs kids in to work on some of their academic skills and/or their social skills with the support of the special educators and the parent educators. And I think it's gonna, I think, I'm hoping it's gonna work well, so. It also gives those families an opportunity, if they want, for their child to stay all day, to pay tuition, to have them stay for the whole day, so.
I didn't, I know I asked this question, but I can't recall the response. But I wondered if there was a training or a liability issue of if you have special ed staff supervising students who have needs during that short period of time and then parents elect to continue in the program, but it would be with inexperienced staff.
So if they were to stay for the full day program? For students who need extra support, then they would have to have extra support with them. So parents would have to provide that. A lot of our special needs kids are perfectly fine to be in a, in an after-school program on their own. Some of the kids.
So there wouldn't be a requirement for staffing that would, okay.
No, it's a, you know, they would have to, if, if the student needed extra support to participate, the sta- the parents would have to provide that. We have ways of helping them find that kind of support.
I don't know if there's any questions on that.
Well, and I, I didn't recall if the financial question on the middle school program was responded to.
Specifically, I'm not looking at that, your question again.
Yeah, I'm not finding the question.
It wasn't. We. We, this was an informational report. We're, and Lee's not here, so. Your question was more on the financial. Yeah, the financial, the financial projection you asked for will be coming, but it's not here tonight.
All right. Well, and, and just my quick observation is just the financials on the, on the middle school program. Given that the enrollment is a lot less than anticipated, and that was, my recollection is that was supposed to break even this year.
And I know we have to analyze that because he has cut costs, but has it been enough? I don't know.
Okay, so that, it will be coming, and, and that was, the other question I had is it looked like, I don't know if this is accurate or not, but it looked like the tuition increase was amounted to like a dollar a day. And my question was, was that really adequate to cover any?
That was the five percent that you, that was indicated.
Well, it was the twenty dollars per week, and I guess I looked at it as, I didn't know if it ran four or five days a week. And I was kind of looking at the estimated number of weeks it ran, the July seventh to the first of August, I guess.
Well, at least be four dollars a day. Yeah, I saw your question. I need Lee to finish it, but I, I don't, I don't think it's that small.
Well, my question is really, was the tuition increase a good balance between what would continue to allow families to participate with what covers the cost of the program?
Sure. We, we did discuss that, but it, it proves in the numbers, so we'll get that.
Okay, thanks.
So, my ignorance, I guess, but what's behind the volatility in the, in the middle school after-school program?
Well, the numbers, in some cases, it, it starts out and it was a higher number, higher volume. And those happens to be probably a lot of the, what we know is a lot of the sixth graders begin. But then as activities start to happen for kids, then some of them migrate away from the program. So there's some volatility based on other student offerings. And so part of what Lee is indicating here is that there may be a way where we do it a little bit different so that there's a shorter period of stay for some of the kids before they go off to a co-curricular or a club. And so there may be a different method, method that needs to be deployed here at the middle school.
Commitment made on a week by week basis or a day by day basis?
Well, the, the parents are paying on a week by week basis. Well, that's currently the way, the way it is, and so that's that volatility. Typically, we've not dipped below, I think, thirteen students. And again, this was the idea and a recommendation. We've been as high as, I think, twenty-three. But, and Steve and Lee, as John said, has adjusted his staff accordingly to, to meet those needs. And sometimes that's hard because you, you gotta have one for one, you know? But we're, we're really being mindful, and I think the work with the summer school piece and looking at, you know, where we go in the, with the proposed idea of fifth grade and what that might look like here in the middle school, how we get that word out, how we look at some variability options between kid wants to go to schools out for one hour and then go to a, you know, I'm going to say a, a four-thirty practice or event. That's part and play what he's feeling a lot of that volatility is.
It is a crucial time. When he proposed the, the middle school program, it has typically, these programs have two to three years to prove themselves. So we're in, we're halfway, so.
Any other questions on kind of schools out? Again, I'm very proud of what they're doing, and again, we're trying to be mindful of the, the financial piece. And that's why I put it on here, just an update. School governance, again, Martin already talked about or alluded to the, the situation. While it is not directly connected to us, it really is directly connected to us because as a K through twelve supervisory unions look to, to regovern themselves, it's likely that districts like us will be recipients of, of, you know, opportunities and students. And so that's really the idea and the discussion that's currently happening. The, the House has taken testimony probably at least nine or ten times in different locations from different people. Last night was one, and I did testify in front of the House Ed Committee last night on the House floor. And a lot of the, the dialogue really is around, you know, those learning opportunities and how we can ensure, you know, financial equity, but more importantly, opportunities for kids. My specific, you know, pitch was, it really is about the opportunities. Kids that are in certain locations in Vermont may not have the same opportunities as others. And we should be more mindful about what are the opportunities we want. And it, and I talked, talked a little bit about an opportunities audit, if you will, around looking at it from the two student perspective and also from the community perspective. Repurposing schools or repurposing locations, I think, is also an important dialogue that needs to be happened and be happening. And that really is looking at, you know, where do the kids come back to? If they travel six miles away, I use that as an example, and then they come back to that location. Can there be senior centers, civic centers, recreation spaces? Kind of looking at that human service arena that we know is so much in need for, for kids and for community with the idea that Vermont was really strong with having our adult population play a much more major role in the education of our youth. So how could that work? And that was really, I, you know, most importantly was the need for call to action based on taxation currently happening in, in Vermont. And then looking at opportunities that will continue to provide our kids with a great opportunity in their next steps. So that was really the thrust of that.
Could I just a cou- couple of things? It, it seems that there's a, at least the Vermont School Board Association keeps pushing back on the idea that this is going to be a big money saver. The, the way they, they position is it may bend the cost curve, but this is really about opportunities for students. And, and I guess just a question, I, I'm curious, you say that I, I, I don't see as, as directly affecting South Burlington in that we're a K through twelve system. And, and the thrust of it has been, unless it could have changed in the past week because things change rapidly in the legislature, that, that it's mainly supervisor unions and such that are not K through twelve. However, I understand that, that a place such as Georgia or the Islands could be folded in somewhere to be a K twelve. I think they would probably object that it wouldn't be geographically Saint Albans being the closest necessarily. That they have more connections to either Colchester or South Burlington. So I see that. But are there other ways that, that you, you see this affecting our district?
You know, part of the, the dialogue may need to be also around a focused area of expertise, if you will, in, in a school district. That may be some offshoots of this too, where there may be, within our bigger districts, there may be a focus on components of the STEM programs where science and technology, you know, there's some forte, so there may be a draw, not just for the, the immediate location, but other opportunities. I see that as one. I think that currently, it is not a bill. It's still in discussion and it, we're, it is changing on a regular basis. I think that even smaller districts need to be looked at too. So we do have some independent running districts that are really, really small in numbers. And that needs to enter into the fold as well. And we may be, be positioned to be in a place where we could accept them. Even that is, you know, kind of the, you know, the, the high school population. So, you know, I think, and we certainly are a big player in that because obviously the, you know, our, our increase this year was a three percent increase with an eight and a half percent tax rate increase. So clearly there's, you know, there's, we're, we're very much involved in this process as, as the way X sixty-eight is currently set up. So I think you're, you're definitely right in that the, the biggest, most significant changes are going to be for the, you know, our, our outliers.
But does this have the potential to shut down the opportunity for the tuition program that we have?
I think, again, that's a good question. It's part of this around the choice opportunity or the choice bill that's kind of interconnected to this. And that's kind of why I'm saying, you know, a forte for certain schools to be able to welcome through choice may put a little bit of a kink in where kids would be assigned, and again, that's part of the plan.
No, I mean, the worst case scenario is that they take Georgia and the Islands and they fold them into a K twelve with Colchester. And they keep choice under Act one twenty-nine where money doesn't follow. So I mean, yeah, there, there's a downside, whether that's going to happen anytime soon or whether people realize that that's not really choice. You know, it's, it's, it's all so speculative, but that's kind of like the, where we don't want to go, so. but that's kind of like the, where we don't want to go, so.
And so there's, there's, you know, there's a timeline here that, that begins to, I mean, right now, it's two thousand and nineteen, which would be when this would begin, and there's all kinds of, you know, proposed kind of processes that would be up into that, and I did include that in, in your packet. I just, again, I, there's a lot of talk about it, I certainly want you to be informed about it. I think it's really hard to be up to date, you know, on a moment's notice. But this is the time, right now, with the next couple of weeks, where the bill's actually gonna be formed, and it's gonna be important for us to read it and understand kind of the implications, as Martin said, around, you know, those choice options to make sure we're, we're in a good place to continue to, to provide what we feel is right, so.
Well, and this, my understanding is, because I, this was notable to me when the legislative session opened, is there really weren't any education bills at the start of the session that I can recall of substance. So I do think it was an impact of the, of the ed tax rate that has precipitated.
Certainly, but people are trying to tamp the expectations of savings down from that, particularly because there is still this very strong movement against, from above, closing small, small schools or consolidating. There still is an aversion to that, and, and until that's done, there aren't significant opportunities, I don't think, for, for savings. It's not gonna be from, from consolidating the governance of, of the SUs and such. It's gonna be driving the teacher-student ratio down, and to do that, you know, schools are gonna have to, to close.
And again, I, I've tried to help them to change that wording of, you know, closing, but obviously, if you're gonna move a group of, of students to another school, you know, that word "closing," I think, needs to, needs to be really carefully talked about because I don't think it is in the best interest of a small community, even with a small building, to close the building. They ought to talk about repurposing, and that is what's absolutely charging our communities, is that you're gonna close that building. And I think changing that conversation to keeping it open for, you know, these opportunities that need to be defined individually by communities is exactly, when you look back at some Vermont history, Grange Halls and things of that nature were very, very popular for, for our youth to be integrated with their public, et cetera, and to have really great opportunities as, as they grew up. So, I'm trying to change that conversation a little bit, and I think that's been one of the, kind of, the more important takeaways for me. So, I'll keep you posted.
Just one thing, and just kind of second what Dan's question was, when changes happen, they, we have to be really diligent to watch. The, there's forty, we have forty kids expected to come from the eighth grade this year, which is the highest class in like seven years, so that's, that's a real plus for our district. And the kids, the opportunity plus the, the funding is just amazing, so.
There's volatility. Definitely from that number, what the legislator is, legislature is proposing, and, and certainly the finances that follow. Thanks, John. Okay, so that's all I have under my report. I'm just taking advantage of a long report, I apologize for that.
All right, we will shift to Agenda Item Ten and consider the school district calendar.
So, I don't need to spend a lot of time on this. Again, this is always a, a process that takes some time because we have regional calendars that we need to pay attention to because we need to align with what we call common dates. And I think really important, because we send kids to the same technical programs, we have to have a, a common calendar. But yet, everybody, other districts, other, other schools have different numbers of days. And so we identify common days, and then we have the opportunity to add some different days in different places. And so we are currently, and the reason that it's called off of action is that particularly right now, that the August twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth are identified actually as non-common days. And so currently, I believe I have to get a waiver for those, for those twenty-fifth and twenty-sixth. And before I bring it to you for action, I want to make sure that I've provided, you know, the necessary clarity on that. Other than that, I think, you know, the, the calendar, again, I've had the opportunity to talk with, you know, both the administrators and the teachers' union around this, and have kind of gleaned their feedback as well. I think, you know, the, the December break is always one, you know, where that falls, this is quite a long period of time, if you notice. And that's just the way that happens, it's a full two weeks that, that students are off.
Have we gotten to the point where I know it was a goal to be able to have all teachers available to participate in graduation?
I was successful in, first of all, I have a space issue, even though, you know, Saint Mike's is a good size, and that could not happen, so last year, last year, all of them watched at the same time through closed-circuit TV from their locations. And, you know, I had a fair amount of just, like, questions, like, why? And what I got back from that was, thank you, you know, it, it was really an important event. So I'm still wanting to, to stay on that, but this calendar reflects that there will be a half-day for the elementary, but I'll be able to still require teachers to watch the graduation requirement, although it will be taped delayed.
So we have a, we have a space limitation issue?
Yeah, it's just, you know, obviously, the most important is for the graduates and their families, and we don't put caps on the numbers of family members that come and, can come and attend. And so it begins to be packing, you know, folks in there, and so, anyway.
Can I just make a comment? I, I appreciate that, for the first time, that the high school days in May are showing up on this calendar, rather, so that we're giving people some notice about this. This is something that, at least I have gotten calls about for the last couple of years, when it comes out late that, that these kids have the day off. But there is some question from people about why the kids need the days off at that point in time.
You mean the late start dates?
No, I mean, in May, the fourteenth, testing, no schools, no school for ninth and twelfth graders. And they also have the fifteenth off, I understand that's for conferences, but then there's late starts that whole week. That's, that, it's, it's a, it's a little bit of a hardship on some people, and I just.
I recognize that it is, and I, we've, we've talked about it administratively, and, you know, initially, it feels like you could do a quick fix and have, you know, the other, the students come. But it is, it is, in order to do the assessing and the testing correctly, it involves, first, we got a good number of students that are involved in it, and then to administer it is, you know, timely, take staff. And so it, it is complicated for that to then hold school while still doing that event, you know, those testing events. What I would say, though, is what a conversation I think is, is ripe and ready, is that, given our technology, it could be a virtual day, right? It could actually be a day in school, I know that students might not like that, but where students are required to be essentially working during that time from, from their, their place. And so, because we have that, that technology opportunity, that's something, again, we're in a little bit of discussion around, so that.
So what is the specific testing at that time?
Well, these are, you know, these are end-of-the-year tests, we have, you know, there's a whole series of them, as you know, and we're gonna have smarter balance, we're gonna have, we've had kneecap in the past, we have AP exams which happen, you know, in and around here, so there's a fair amount of those. And again, that's, that's basically what we're expected to adhere to. I, I am, I, I, we're watching, I, I really would like to say, everybody, you know, everybody's coming in, how can we make that happen? And when you look at it logistically, and space is needed, because you can't put everybody in one room, you still have to have a good number of rooms and spaces and proctoring, if you will, and make sure that's done right, but.
So I don't want to be presumptuous, but did we have some student feedback on?
Numbers of days or?
The calendar items we were just discussing?
Those May dates or any dates?
A virtual day sounds great.
What?
A virtual day sounds great.
Like once a week.
On Friday?
I was just trying to read the body language there.
What are you saying? Sabina's saying, I don't care.
Yeah, good point.
It's a good week for everyone, I think.
What do, what do you mean by that?
Like?
The break?
Yeah, definitely, I think, because that's when.
Even though it's like a week after April break?
Yeah, I still think, because May is a time of AP exams, and I think that's when a lot of people are trying to get their work done, trying to study. And I think that's a time where people just really need to take a break. And then if they're not in AP exams, then they still have final exams coming up soon too. So I remember when, yeah, when I was in ninth grade, I remember having, like, a lot of time, and even like twelfth grade or eleventh grade, I know this year I'll probably be really thankful for that week just because I have, like, three or four AP exams as well, and I need to study for those too.
Good feedback.
Do we have numbers, David, on how many actual days of instruction each grade has? Does that, because we, you know, it seems like every grade has a different number of school days depending on whether they have testing or they're not in school because someone else has testing. Well, it would count for the students that are having testing done, but it wouldn't count as a school day for the students who have the day off.
Yeah.
So, just to sort of in the big picture, how many school days are there for each grade? You know, when you add in all the, you know, the days off for various things. You know, and I'm not talking about, like, the late start days, but just more the, the time off to accommodate other things. It's just, it just occurred to me, if they were all, if it all evened out in the end or not.
Thanks.
So that will come back to your next, next round, and we'll put it on to our April meeting.
I'm gonna ask, because it's a good question. So Sabina just asked me, do you know how many snow days are built in? And it's a question that I get pretty frequently too, and I don't know the answer to.
The question I get is, who do I call to get a snow day?
So the way, way our district works is we're required by law to have one hundred and seventy-five student days. Our students actually have one hundred and eighty days. And so by, by virtue of the number of days, we have five days that are built in, okay? And so that's essentially what happens. So if we lose right now another day, if it's snowing out there heavy right now, even if it, we'll be fine, I hope. The weather looks good, by the way, so no scares here. But if we were to lose another day, then we would have to, we would have to make up an additional day on the calendar. So, and likely, we would not be adjusting graduation, we would find another day somewhere in our, in our current calendar where we would have that day, all right? So that's, our snow days are not built, are built into our calendar, but unless we go below one-seventy-five, we don't have to make them up.
Just so you know, the board did get some personal appeals for snow days.
Yeah, did they? Oh, boy.
Yeah, they sent us a very nice email lobbying for the snow days.
Before, before it happened, given the amount of snow and the.
I sent a note back saying, you get one of those in your K through twelve career, I hope you appreciate it.
I don't remember, I don't remember ever.
I take it care of it for you.
I don't remember having one growing up in Burlington, ever, ever.
All right, we'll move on to Agenda Item Eleven, and we're almost on time.
Yep, and Number Eleven, Special Education Services and Funding, and Joanne is here and actually prepared the, just, report for you. And so, again, I'm happy to have you ask Joanne questions, but let me start out with you. Joanne, again, thanks for being here, and I don't know if you want to kick this off with any kind of just general statement or start?
I mean, basically, I, this is a brief summary of what we're doing, the number of staff and the students. I, our child count is increasing, which is, but it's, our percentage is not, so I think it's generally just the population increasing. I actually just got on the website and compared over the years, and we're at about ten percent, which is pretty good. We're one of the lowest in the state, their average is around fifteen percent of students identified as special education. I do think that our work around MTSS, and I don't know how much David's talked to you around that, the multi-tiered systems of support, it's an initiative coming out of the AOE, which I think is gonna be a transformational, something transformational for any district that embraces. It's really gonna help us to build strong programs for all kids, and that's less expensive than putting kids in special education. It's the most expensive way to serve kids is by putting them in special education. Even though we get a lot of reimbursement through the state, it still is an expensive way to educate. So I think we're doing a great job, I think that we have really talented teachers, and you had asked Elizabeth, I don't know who asked the question about the ratio of staffing, and I said it wasn't a real simple answer. We, we really, I use a model that Michael G. and Greco developed called Numbers That Count to look at the ratio of special educator to total students in the school because they do more than serve the special ed students. We also look at caseload, and we look at ratio of paraeducators, and the numbers are, we're in really good shape. We had to move some people around because Chamberlain was shrinking, we took a staff member away there last year. And I think we're very, in a very equitable place where the students are really well-served. So, and we have the financials here too, I don't know if you have questions on that.
I think the MTSS work and.
Hit on that, it may be helpful to get more information on that in the future, but the administrators, we're spending, you know, some considerable time, and I think this a lot leads to proactive measures and system, you know, systems being developed to serve that. And that, I think, is gonna be really informative for our, for our roadmap forward. And I know you don't have a lot of detail on that, but there's a lot of really great work happening at the schools right now around identifying kind of our statuses within each of those areas.
I'd be interested in hearing more about that. Is that, is that a process, Joanne, that's been adopted across the state or in Chittenden County?
It has, it's, it's something that's being offered through the AOE, and we've always, it's, it's a new, it's a reverberation of RTI, the Response to Intervention, which was a new process that came out. We have been in South Burlington working on this for a while, you see the big puzzle that's posted in there, and that's really our MTSS model with the puzzle pieces of really looking at, how's the culture of the buildings? How are we doing with data? Do we have good instructional strategies? Are our teachers working collaboratively? All of those pieces. So the AOE took a lot of research, they had this huge team that worked together under, with Marge Lipson from UVM, really kind of leading the charge, and they developed these indicators in ways of evaluating it. So the administrative team and Stuart and myself went to Best last year in June and really thought about it in terms of a system, and are getting everyone on board. The principals are very excited about it, they all, most of them have leadership teams in their buildings that are examining their processes and choosing goals. So it, it dovetails with the Green Mountain Star work that we're doing, where we're, you know, with our, with our scores, where our kids are not performing, we've had to make goals around those. It all dovetails, but it makes the whole system work for the whole district, which is something that I've been dreaming about since I've been, since I've started working here so many years ago. So I think it's really gonna be a game changer as we move forward on this, and.
What I'm, I'm happy about is that the state does have some resources.
And their coaching with us.
And that's been a really helpful piece for us because, you know, sometimes that, you know, the mandate or, or the desire by us to have it or to do it, you have to find the resources within to make it happen. And although we're putting a lot of effort in, we have an individual who's really been helping us and putting that work together for us.
One of the things we're really trying to communicate to the faculty is that it's not a new initiative. It's basically taking all the good things we've been doing and examining those and seeing, what do we need to do more of? What do we need to do differently? What kind of data do we need to have so that we're not, it's not a whole new thing? It's just basically pulling it all together so that our kids are making progress and meeting ends that, that we've set for them, so.
So it's the multi-tiered system of supports, and, and so when you think of supports, it's, you know, it's all of that, you know, whatever supports our system, and that's, it looks at all of those systems, as Joanne indicated. And we're really, we've spent a good amount of time, and I am due to probably give you a little bit of an update on some of the things that we're, we're gonna be mapping out. And that's part of my kind of work with the administrators on plotting out the roadmap ahead, which leads into the master planning and visioning work, et cetera, around how we continue to support students, yeah.
I want to inform the board that Agency of Education has started an audit of our IDEA, our federal funds, last March, and they had fieldwork here, and then we didn't hear from them until New Year's Eve. And we've been back and forth, Joanne's office and my office, providing a ton of information. And we expect an audit report soon, and then we'll, we'll look at it and see. So just, just to have that out there.
Is that something on a regular basis?
No, this is, this is the first time since I've been here, and it's audit of two thousand and twelve, it's not this year.
One specific year?
Mm-hmm.
Did we just come up on their schedule, or?
I think so.
We have no real idea why, how that happens, but.
Were we a risk? Like, I, I mean, you said.
Well, we've had to, we've had to pull the. Well, we, we've had to, we've had to, um, pull the timesheets for every bus driver that is, was charged there and every bus aide and those kind of things. So it's been pretty extensive.
But to your knowledge, it's nothing triggered it.
It's not a risk. I think if they go through a process, I know the state audit goes through a process of who's going to be next.
Right.
And we've had a number of our colleagues that have had it too. So it's not, and it's not like, you know, we continue to, to do what we believe is, is appropriate, obviously. There is one area, I mean, when you bring up like transportation, I think there's some, there's a desire for clarity around, you know, our students that are on buses with special education services have aides. And there's questions right now, at least on this particular audit, that, you know, that, the, the, it's not reimbursable, tho- those, those aides and so...
Well, everything has to be documented in a special, wonderful way with eyes dotted and t's crossed.
And so we'll, we'll keep, when we get information, we'll keep, I just wanted you to know that, just in the context of this report.
Our time in the process.
Oh, you're welcome, yeah.
Thanks, Joanne.
Thanks.
Thank you.
We will. All right, we'll move on to agenda item number twelve and we have taken two point four off the agenda, so two point seven asset protection.
Correct. So I'll, I'll, again, I know, we had a couple of board members work, um, with us specifically, actually John, uh, to do a, you know, a review of this. And so I'm, I'll kind of let this be the board's work and walk through it. If you have any questions, let us know. You do have that sheet somewhere.
We, we didn't, um, the monitoring report that's here was what was sent to Martin and Julie on the committee. And there were, there was questions that were, came through Sun- Sunday night and were answered Monday. But we have not cross-referenced the answers to the report. So, um, just so you know that, we didn't have time to do that yet.
Finalize it, obviously, then tonight, but, but we can go over the few questions that, I mean, I have follow-up questions. I don't think we need to go ever through every question because they've been answered.
I mean, I think the only thing of material interest to the board is going to be that we continue to be out of compliance. And I just think there's a good reason for why, but I think we need to talk a little bit about that.
Yeah, that was one of them, yeah, that was one of the areas.
I mean, do you think there's other hotspots? I mean, they can look at our questions too.
Um, well, I, I guess I, the one question I still had, which was a follow-up to, to your question, follow-up to the answer to your question, was with regards to detail policy number three. Uh, and, and Julie had asked essentially, uh, is there some sort of conflict potential of having a particular vendor doing the maintenance evaluations? Uh, evaluating what needs to be done and then having that vendor, uh, do that work? Because is there a motivation to find problems to fix? The answer, uh, that we got back was that the, uh, that the administration works closely with these vendors as we delegate the care and maintenance of the particular equipment to them. We do provide them with relevant information when they are hired. I guess that doesn't really quite get to the question though, though, John. I guess, th- th- maybe if I ask it a little bit different, different way, um, I mean, if...
John actually gave a longer, um...
Answer to you.
Answer to me and I, he copied you too. I don't know if you saw that, but it was, it was...
Yeah, I, I can get through it.
Yeah, no, that's fine. Uh, let, let, let me just ask a real quick other question. I mean, if, if, if a vendor, uh, if one of the folks who are wa- watching maintenance say, yeah, you need to repair this roof, presumably that just goes out for bid still. And that vendor can be part of that bid process.
If it's, if it's, if it's at the level.
Right.
But what happens is, we don't have those contracts because we really want to, but we have a master electrician and a master plumber, uh, HVAC person on staff who's very capable to doing that. But there's only so much resource from those, so many hours in a day, is how I said it. So, we have someone to look annually at the generator that backs this up, for instance. And when they come to, um, they don't just do work that's over and above their contract. They come to Mike O'Brien, our master electrician, who says, we need to do this. And then that goes up, up the chain of command to Bart Micali. And so we don't just, we don't just, um, oh, great, those guys know what they're doing. It's not that at all.
Right.
So, if it is something that, um, Bay State Elevator had the service contract here, you know, we had the emergency repair, we bid that out. They actually did get the job, but that was, we had three different bids and we came to the board. And so it does, it, 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 the controls are in place.
Okay.
I think your, your point, you know, I, I, I know what you're asking around, you know, you're the roof person and because we have a good relationship, you come up and you look at it and you give us information. And then we bid it out accordingly to what you stated. Your question is, are we creating favorability to, to you, to your company when it's bid out?
Well, it's not even just, it could be that, but it's...
It's in part the conflict that an organization can find problems to fix if they think they have the inside track to be the one doing the fixing. It, it's just something, it sounds like there's probably...
Yeah, and I, what I, what I would say to that is I think we've done a, a much better job of putting controls in place where we have, you know, our stewardship plan, where we know, you know, our roof warranties and our, our maintenance cycles and things of that nature. So, you know, we know we have to replace a roof, you know, because we have number one issues and we also know the life of it. And so soliciting this feedback generally isn't about, um, you know, finding a problem. We know there's a problem, we know we need to make a change. And so it's, it's utilizing those resources that way.
I think the one thing, when I first started here, uh, the question was, you mean, we have to bid that out? And, uh, I don't hear that much anymore. It's, uh, it's refreshing because it, it, we have a pretty, especially in the facility side, we, there's appreciation for the money that's there and, and, um, uh, trying to save as much as possible. So, that's a, that's a good thing. They also know if it's, um, well, we'll get to it later, that if there's, um, a bid that they want to, that's recommended, that's higher than the low bid, there better be an explanation for it, you know, and that's, that's another thing, so.
Okay, I guess the, um...
The other question that Julie just, uh, alluded to as well is with respect to detail number five. And the only reason I'm talking is she nominated me to be the one talking for us.
I guess, okay.
Right?
Yes.
All right.
She's a, she's a timekeeper, Martin.
Yeah, all right, well, I just wanted to make, but I wasn't trying to hog the stage on, on this monitoring report, though I love this monitoring report dearly. Um, number five, i- it's, for as long as we've been doing the monitoring report, we've not been in compliance. And we've not been in compliance because of not giving training for, uh, conflict of interest. And, and the understanding now is that the state doesn't have a training based on conflict of interest that can be used. And I guess the question that you, that, that, or the answer or suggestion that you raised was whether distribution of guidelines would cover the requirement. And I guess, are the guidelines in here? Did I miss them somehow or what?
We don't have guidelines.
You don't have guidelines?
That are written out. Most of the conflict of interest policies that exist are for boards. And, and so they're not operation for purchasing and that kind of thing. Now, I mean, eventually it's, it's board's responsibility, but we're looking at the, at the level. There, there are a number of universities I've looked at that have pretty good operating policies. But when it says, uh, um, a class or instruction, um, I mean, I'll be honest with you, I haven't had time to put something together that, that I... When John Everett first said, this is what we do, it was more an hour class that everybody had to sit down and take. And we have, um...
Doesn't seem like it should be an hour talking about conflict of interest.
Right, right.
It should, it seems like it should be a really quick, like, as you're hired, this is, but maybe I'm...
Mm-hmm, well, maybe I'd say it. Man, I've made it to a big thing and the line has helped me with contacts and that kind of thing. And every year she goes, you better get that going. So it's not like, it's not like I'm not feeling guilty here, but no.
So I guess, I mean, a- as far as just, yeah, I suppose if it's a guideline that is appropriate and there can be some sort of certification that each individual has looked at it, you know, presumably that's, that's enough. But I think that, I think it's our, that we would leave it to you to figure out the best way to do that. And, 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 and the question is whether the interpretation is going to have to change if you're not going to provide training. And the question is if you do, because interpretation says that, I interpret this to me, the superintendent will ensure that employees approving purchases will receive training in identifying potential areas of conflict of interest of purchases. Now, is receiving training getting the guidelines? I guess we could quibble about that. It might be easier to change the interpretation so long as it stays reasonable, which presumably...
Couldn't you just have a little meeting with all those people?
Yeah, well, whichever, you know, there could be any number of things.
This is the deal?
Well, I think, I mean, there's, we have a series of things that we, again, this, this, this is, this is an outstanding issue for sure. We've, we've had compliance issues with our custodians on, I'm just going to say asbestos management, CPR training, you know, we have a whole seri- and, you know, our MSDS sheets and via, and currently what we've just put in place or not that long ago is what we call safe schools. And this is a place that's actually a great service to us. People can sign on to it, it's a certification process. It's a, you know, it provides great access. And I think this is an area where we could do something similar. And again, Karen has been working with us to, to, to make this happen. And I think this is probably a viable option to say, we're, here's a training program and, and the following people have to, you know, have to be assured that they've been informed.
Yeah, because we, we do this with the, with teachers. We have sort of the, um, it, it's almost annually, I think, bloodborne pathogen. And it's like you go on the website and...
Right, and that's...
It's, I certify, I read this.
That's right, and we're pulling those things into safe schools now. And again, I don't...
Well, I think, I mean, it doesn't, it probably...
It doesn't matter how you do it, that's the means. But right now, you probably have to look at the interpretation of what's going to be sufficient in your view.
To make that...
Uh, and then we'll have to look and see if the interpretation is suf- is sufficient. Because right now, the policy says make any purchase wherein normally prudent protection has not been given against conflict of interest. Your interpretation is that that requires training. There's not training available, but there are probably any number of ways that, that, that policy can be taken care of. So I think it's interpretation and evidence that needs to be done probably by next time. Be it a meeting, be it a webinar...
Be it an email.
We recognize that.
Carry your pigeons, you know, any number of...
I got it.
Options might be, I'm sorry, it's a very important... I'm getting a little punchy.
Any other?
Serious.
Uh, I, well, the, yes, there was...
You did a very thorough review, by the way, thank you.
Yes, uh, it was fun. Detail policy number seven. The question is whether this should be, the questions on this one should be taken up with respect to the audit because these come right from the audit. And do we need to talk about these now? I, I, we, we did raise some questions about this. I, I, I guess I can, well, let me ask them right now because it's in the context of this monitoring report. John did provide an answer to the question that we had with respect to detail policy seven. My, my, I had a couple of follow-up questions with this and, and the first one is...
Ask, tell them what the first question was, though.
What first question? Oh, the, the, how many hours would we need to add to the business office in order to get the situation into compliance? You know, what is the projected cost for adding capacity at the business office to get more involved in monitoring and controlling the student activity accounts? And is the cost worth the benefit? And, and the policy that we're looking at and the issue that we're looking at is whether there's a- appropriate oversight, as I understand it, of, of accounts, student activity accounts at the elementary school or all, all five schools?
Well, it's, um, this is...
School two.
Okay.
Um, the, it's different issues at the high school, but because you, the, the key issue is that expenditures don't come through on the orders from the schools. They've been given many years ago, the, the authority and responsibility to write their own checks. And electronically, you know, schools weren't connected before. So, the issue is, in order to, they, this student activity should go through the same purchasing guidelines we have for every, everything. And that the checks, all the disbursement should be seen by the board and re, to be certified that they've been re- reviewed by our office on a timely manner. We, we reconcile their bank statements after the fact, but the, the expenditures have happened already at that point. So that's the, that's the issue.
Right.
That's what the auditors would say too.
Unless we can change the practice of the, of the process, I mean, that's, that's a conversation.
I mean, change the check writing practice where that doesn't exist, but then what's the, what, what is, what's the resulting issues that then happen in, in supporting students in, in the buildings or, you know, providing for them? So, I, I'm not, I'm, again, this is a deeper conversation for us. This is a hard area, um...
That is a question we can talk to Ron about though, right?
Mm-hmm, yes.
Exactly, and what's recommended particularly in, in times of right now, you know, in two thousand and fourteen, based on when we first started this practice back in, I don't know when it was, when they gave, when they all had a kind of a check register option and, and what might be the, a better resolve.
Yeah, I, I guess, I mean, one, the, the two biggest questions I still had, and maybe it waits for Ron, is, is one, is what you have recommended as a solution, is that required by the audit, essentially? And the second question, well, if it's required, well, then that seems to be the end of the discussion. But if it's not, is, is the benefit of however much money we're putting towards this, are, are we getting enough benefit for that cost? In other words, how much money is at risk at, at the schools and these accounts? If we're spending ten thousand dollars to deal with accounts that only are moving a couple thousand a year, I just don't, no, does that make sense?
Quickly tell you, at the elementary schools, the risk is pretty small. Orchard, um, let me get my schools right. Orchard doesn't even have a student activity account. Chamberlains is small, Central's is a little bigger. The middle school has the most risk. They have, um, there's a lot of money runs through there and it's all done manually by the principal, in the principal's office. So, if you wanted to see that, you'd see a pile of paper because that's, that's what they have and they have a spreadsheet. And so, um, and our auditor said, boy, you should just start implementing saying to the schools, that you, we need to get those copies to the board every week, whatever manner they are. I'm not sure that that's great because systematically then you're looking at, and so I, so am I, you know, and still, still their, their expenditures are already made by the time I know about them, so...
So is it, is it...
Nobody's looking at them by the time?
Oh, no, no, no.
Oh.
They, no, we review them and Amy, for instance, Amy Denton goes to the schools two or three times a year to, to reconc- and she gets the bank statements every month and reconciles them, then goes out there and checks things.
Okay.
But it's way too late.
Right, if anything was happening.
If I'm a secretary and I missed the sales tax or someone doesn't have a receipt.
We're out of compliance.
It's, it's easy for my office, hey, get the receipt. But in the schools, it's different because you're...
Right.
You know, it's, it's just, it's a different, um, we're more the, we're other, the, we watch over it. And they do too, but it's not, it's just part of their, one small part of their job.
Sure.
So, it, uh, it would take, does take a lot to keep it in, in order though, you know, and more, it would take more resources.
I think Martin asked the question, how much money is at risk? Is that...
Like in the middle school?
A hundred thousand dollars? Is that a year? Is that ten thousand dollars a year?
Oh, no, in the middle school, Gregley runs a hundred thousand dollars through there.
They do.
Yes.
But where, where, I guess, is that where the risk is or is it the fifty dollars in taxes that we shouldn't have paid? You know, that's, I mean, are we going to...
Well, I mean, if someone else is running that money, it's a risk, you know what I mean?
Well, no, but that, but that, but they're checking it afterwards for, for that kind of problem. Is that not right? I mean, that's...
But after the final.
Once again, we're checking it all the time, but, um, if, if someone writes a check and there's no invoice, um, where, where do you go? It's, it's, it's good accounting to, to have our office do it.
Sure, sure.
Uh, no one's excited about even, about this. Most districts ignore it. Amy and I have talked this through and we can say, I can say that, most districts, most districts don't treat it as seriously as we just, we were trying to do. You know, and we know we're not, um, we need to improve. I know it's tough, I, believe me, it's not in the budget. We didn't put the money in the budget. And during these times, it's like, whoa, so can we, can we squeeze a little more out of our staff and that kind of thing, so... But I, I do, I do think you'll get a little more clarity from the auditor because it's on their management letter and...
And perhaps some ideas on...
Yeah.
Yeah, what maybe, that's actually a requirement in the...
Will we be able to take the revised, um, version of two point seven? Will that coincide with when the auditor can be here?
Oh, yes, yes.
So that, right now, that'll go on, is it the next one agenda?
Oh, yeah, this is just a matter of time.
So Ron, that would be, that would conduct tail with this, yeah.
So is the next step, Martin and Julie, to, uh, incorporate the responses?
Yeah, I think there's probably, yeah, half a dozen, maybe, is that. Yeah, I think there's probably, yeah, half a dozen, maybe, is that. A lot of those questions that were answered.
And we'll come back to for the next meeting.
Were, were there any other items that should kind of get, become, come before the whole board?
I don't think so.
So, we'll see a revised two point seven, and we'll have the auditor's report at the next meeting.
Yeah, so you'll see that whole item twelve repeat itself.
All right. Okay, let's set the agenda for, actually, um, we're gonna move that into.
Our work session on the twenty-sixth?
We're gonna move that into our follow-on meeting.
We could, if you want to, or talk about some of the items now. That's the, that's our work session. Oh, yes, you're right, 'cause we're not sure.
Right.
But we could brainstorm on topics.
Did we wanna try to clear off some of these topics for future agenda?
Well, let's.
Well, that's, we did talk about that at the last meeting.
Dan, you, you wanted to propose submit potential agenda items for the retreat. David, I think you have copies of that. I don't think we necessarily need to settle on anything at this moment, 'cause we'll have a chance to discuss it after. But why don't we, Dan, if you wanna kind of cover your proposed topics?
Sure. So, I just tried to jot down, uh, some topics that I think we have trouble finding some quality time to talk about and that I think have variable amounts of background information that may have to be brought together to talk about them. But, um, so I just listed them here. First, I thought we ought, the time is such that I think we owe it to ourselves to talk a bit about tax rates and spending and what's been going on historically and where we, what opportunities we have to change the direction. You can read the rest of it. I, I think we need to get back to the 2020 vision and, and in particular, its implications. And what, and what, what's, what's behind it and what could it lead to? And if there are any significant options or alternatives that are in there that need to be considered, what they are. I think that in general, we need to periodically, and I know we try to do this through the monitoring process and everything, but I wanted to back up to, to a very high level view of, of are the ends being met with excellence? We suggest that we might be willing to pay a little bit more to ensure that we get excellence. Question is, do we actually get it? Where's the evidence for that? And I made some suggestions. I'd like that to be as quantitative as possible with metrics in place. In some places, I should make some suggestions, and other places, I really don't know what, what the metric should be. I'd like the metric to be something that's of substance, not just an activity report. And the things I've seen in some areas tend to be activity, not results. And then I put in here the support of the community specifically in the sense of the budget support, which is where I brought in the voting results, kind of a discussion, what implications they might have. Uh, we continually have this discussion in the context, I'm going on to the policy on enterprises. We continually have this discussion on nutrition services under run and where that goes. And, and I searched around a little bit to see if I could find whether we had any, that I could find, any policy. I'm here assuming that we have one in some place and we ought to just review it, about how do we handle those things? And what do we do with positive and negative balances in those, in those funds? How do they get there? Where do they go? That kind of thing. And specifically, and this is something I'd hope we could talk with the, with the auditor about a little bit, is the, when we supplement one of these general funds, like the, like the nutrition services thing with money, of the general fund, is that a loan? Is that a grant? It seems to be accounted for, and, and this I wanted to talk with Ron about is, is it seems to, they seem, we seem to be accounting for the, them as a loan in the fund, but as a grant in the, in the general fund. So, I think there's maybe an inconsistency there. So, anyway, and, and I think we ought to, as a board, just have an idea, what, what is our intention there? Do we, if, if the fund should start generating a big surplus, what's our attitude about that? If it starts generating a s, a negative one, we take some action. But it's possible for it to generate, to, to accumulate funds, too. We should, we should have an idea what we're gonna do about that. And then one, it's a little more, it's been hanging around, but I think could be quite important, is this airport noise in the changing, changing character, the Chamberlain. And I put Central in there, too, because to me, some of these things are pretty borderline to the Central, to the thing. And, and it may even go a little bit further than that, is to include the city center in that. So, I know the city wants to do that. I know it's come up in the discussion about collaboration with the city. I think we ought to make sure that we're adequately involved in that and that, that the district, 2020 vision ends up being consistent with it. So, those are some ideas I had, things we might talk about. And these could be lengthy discussions. That's why I think, that's why I think, that's why I think they end up in this workshop, work session kind of a thing. And maybe, maybe it begs for more than one work session, maybe one a quarter or something like that, to just make sure we get this stuff attended to. And I'm making no judgment about priority and urgency on any of these things. Just, just, just dumped out of my brain what was bothering me about, things we hadn't talked enough about.
Big topics.
Yeah, those are all excellent topics.
I know, I know I've spoken to David about the potential for using the retreat to really talk about workload priorities and, and also kind of the, how organizational structure is supporting priorities as well. So, that, that was a, a topic that is out there as well. Any other general topics that people would wanna add to the list as we talk about framing this agenda?
Well, I, I mean, there's one that perhaps is subsumed in the. Twenty twenty vision and implications, and that is something that raised last, uh, last spring as far as the reconciling or how we're putting together the, uh, the educational quality standards, Common Core, this, this, uh, performance evaluation initiative at the state level, our ends, 2020 vision, and how those things are all meshing, that might be that same big discussion. But, but I guess I have a question as well, as far as, you know, some of these are going to require, I think, perhaps, you know, hearing a lot from the administration and, and looking at the ends being met with excellence, which I think is an excellent, is a great topic, and we need to talk about that. But I, I, one question I have is when, I'm trying to remember when we're due to hear about monitoring of the ends again. And I'm wondering if we could just have a broader discussion of this topic at that time? Because I thought we had scheduled getting the next monitoring report.
It's on the green thing. You, oh, here is that.
Because I would think that it could coincide with what we're getting from the administration, at least for that one.
I just saw this work session coming and said, okay, is the opportunity, I'm ready to listen.
It's, it's a good idea.
Yeah, no, I think we definitely have to focus.
If not on the calendar going forward, we did ends monitoring in October, or it was scheduled for October.
Did we, we didn't, did we?
Well, my understanding was that we were going to.
I can't remember back then.
Well, we had the new ends. And, and after we got the new ends put in place, we were, I thought we had it already scheduled, but we were going to.
We should make a decision on, that, that could be. Part of getting it out here, at least, and maybe that connects with the, your retreat.
Well, I mean, is, is the administration gonna have anything by next Wednesday for us to discuss at a retreat about ends monitoring? Is the question.
No, I'm, I'm saying. To talk at the retreat, it may be about putting it, you know. We, we only have it as appearing once on the.
Right.
I think we have to schedule that.
Yeah, it seems like it should be maybe more frequent.
And that might, that might be consistent with Dan's recommendation. We may wanna be thinking about more of a quarterly.
Yeah.
I think with all the things that are happening that Martin mentioned, you know, with proficiency-based learning and national, you know, education quality standards, it should be a frequent flyer on our agenda to see.
Ends monitoring.
Oh, yeah, and how everything is lining up.
Yeah. Well, there's a lot that goes into that.
Okay, so we'll, I've, I've got kind of a laundry list of potential topics. Why don't we take this up, um, after the regular meeting? And we can kind of firm up the agenda then for Wednesday and get that worn.
So, on the other items, um, I've written some down. I don't know that I have all of them, though. Obviously, we have Dan's.
Some, too, we can consolidate those.
Yeah.
Okay, our next agenda item is setting the agenda for the April second meeting. Have to find it. So, we do need to add two point seven and.
That whole item, actually, two point four in, so all of number twelve needs to be re-added with action.
Is, sorry, so is Ron coming that night?
Yes.
There's a illness in his family. It's pretty serious. So, if he can't come, it'll be Bill, Paul, who's the onsite auditor, who.
Is he actually coming, or are we Skyping him?
Oh, he'll come.
Oh, he's coming, yeah.
I'm gonna pick on the Skype thing. For this particular thing, it'd be good to have. If we, if for some reason that we can't get him here, then we'll, we'll work in that Skype, but.
Who's on two point one, um, on the big green calendar?
Monitoring, two point one, curriculum, Diane and Martin.
Is it curriculum development review?
No, it's.
Two point one.
Parents and guardians.
Yeah. Two point one, treatment of parents and guardians.
Diane and Julie.
Is it?
Is it possible to have?
Yeah, there's a lot going on.
Well, I think, yeah, I think we're, we're adding the agenda item twelve back, which is two point four and two point seven. We're gonna have, um, the quanti- quantitative feedback from the, um, teacher performance, so we'll have that. So, we've got two fairly significant items there.
Are we doing a monitoring report at the second April meeting?
I should keep it.
Sorry, I know, none of us bring it.
Yes, three point two is on for accountability of the superintendent, so that's, that's evaluation.
Oh.
For the second April.
We like to put that on.
But you don't.
Basically, based on recent press, we're keeping that right where it belongs.
We should do that.
So, you, you do have it. You were thinking about moving that.
Well, no, I was just wondering, this is gonna be, this is a long agenda.
It's not that long.
Should we move two point one to?
Two point seven's I could take along.
A value, or one, um, monitoring on the four, well, or move it to the sixteen? Is it gonna be ready?
What's gonna be ready?
Is the mon, is two point one going to be ready for us to review?
You guys can, I mean, I don't know what, your availability is to review it either. I mean, we can review it from the past.
I mean, if we can do it, is the report gonna be ready? Do you know?
I, I, to see, you know, what, what's entailed. I can't recall.
Okay. Well, we can do it. I can, I can certainly do it. And if we, um, I mean, we can, it might be easier for us to meet than the three of us to meet. So, if we can get it, then Julie and I can schedule a time to meet.
Let me just see what we, you know, we, we owe it to you, so it's, get it, and you can let us know. Given your schedules, you can't.
If I could ha- have it not, I mean, I'd like to really delve into it.
Well, certainly, we have what we, what we, what we did last time. That's right out of the gate. You get that anyway. And then let us then work up a little bit of what are the changes? But you, you folks will at least be able to know a little bit about from the past.
That's fine.
Right?
Okay, and if it doesn't look like we could, do you, like, maybe a week before, five days before the meeting, then we could postpone it? I like to have it before, too. Yeah, I can, yeah.
Certainly, you can get what we did last time right, right off. And then we can make some cha, you know, so.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll try to keep all of that on then.
Yep.
And just be.
So, that's.
I think we'll see how long the audit thing takes.
Right, and that, well, John, that, that will take a little bit of time, probably, right, for?
Historically, it's forty-five minutes, but it could be more.
Yeah, we may have to push it, but we could be ready to do it. How about that?
Yeah.
Great.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
All right, uh, we will move on to anything on future agenda items? Additions, deletions?
It depends on what we put on for next week. We might be losing at least master planning or.
Or the noise?
Or the noise, I think so.
Okay.
Possible.
All right, um, so we'll consider the minutes of the March fifth meeting? Any changes? Seeing none, those are approved. And the minutes of the March tenth meeting? And seeing no comments, those are approved as well.
Great, thank you.
All right, we'll move on to the consent agenda.
So, again, let me just, yeah, let me, let me just say, and again, I wasn't aware, but Ed Hockenberry is in the audience, and he has one item that's on the, the consent agenda, is, uh, proposed new hire for the activities director here in the district. So, welcome, Ed.
Thank you very much.
And welcome to the, the evening. Also on this consent agenda is Kathy Court, who's a longtime special educator, who's at the high school, who's, has, has provided us with her resignation and retirement. And then there's the bid for the network, uh, switches also on here, so.
Can I, um, request that the bid be, um, separated out?
Taken off? Or?
Just a separate action item?
Sure, if somebody wants to make that motion to pull that off, that's fine.
I'll make the motion to pull that off. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay.
All right. So, do I have a, uh, motion to approve the consent agi- item, uh, agenda item for the hire of Mr. Ed Hockenberry and the resignation and retirement of Kathy Court?
Sure.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Welcome, Mr. Hockenberry.
So, anyway, I know that, again, thanks for, for coming, Ed. I know that you probably, not all the board members have had a chance to meet you, but it's nice for you to come tonight. And we have, we have a lot of work ahead, and we're happy to have you on board. So, I don't know if you had anything you wanted to.
Well, I just, I thank you for, for, you know, approving the hire. I'm really excited about it. I'm looking forward to it very much. So, I look forward to meeting you all more personally and working with you hopefully through years to come.
Thank you, and thanks for taking the time to come this evening, and we're sorry we couldn't make that more exciting.
It was, it was pretty exciting. It was quick. I mean, I brought plenty of stuff.
But we're really, we've heard great things, and we've, we're really excited to have you on board, so, welcome.
Thank you. I really appreciate it. It's gonna be great.
All right, so we'll move on to the, take the action on the bid for the hardware network switches. And just so you know, my rationale to pull that off is I just have a hard time approving personnel hires and network switches in the same vote, so. I really didn't wanna cheapen that hire, Ed. And actually, before we move on to that, I had an opportunity to read Kathy Court's letter. And I, I do wanna recognize a significant number of years of service. I think I read thirty-four.
Thirty-four, I believe, yeah.
Thirty-four years of service to the district in, in a special ed capacity. So, I, I would like to recognize her contributions on behalf of the board and pass on our thanks to her.
And we certainly, you know, as you know, on your behalf, we always, when these, these happen, we send, you know, correspondence to them and thank them for their service. And we also do, you know, as, as the year comes to an end, we do a whole, you know, tribute to them as well, you know, district and school.
On, on that process of sending something from the board in the situation, can I propose in future that, that, like, the next time around or the same time around, to bring us something so we can all sign individually?
Sure.
For individuals, 'cause I know you do send something on behalf of us, but I think it'd be more meaningful for us to all sign.
Yeah, so you had a little, so. Obviously, you accept the retirement or resignation. Obviously, you accept the retirement or resignation, and then, and that, in the, in particular situations, you would send kind of a, a letter that would be written back to them, signed by all of you, or an individual letter?
No, I think that's by all of us, that would be not.
Just with an individual signature.
Rather than on behalf of the board from, from.
So you all sign and have it in your packet.
Right.
Good idea.
Yep.
All right, now on to the exciting hardware network switch bid.
So I don't know if there's any questions on this, you know, specifically, other than what you indicated around having it on the same agenda, consent agenda item.
Yeah, and on this one, John, I know I looked at, this was one where you had highlighted they were not the low bidder who we, who was being recommended, but it also sounded like you provided an explanation why the group was recommending the HP unit.
Yes, and actually, Steve Walker, there's another page and a half. After your question, I have more documentation. I didn't bring it, but it's, it's the compati, the switch is one thing, but then the compatibility of the cables, that we should have had a switch, but we need the cables that were compatible. It's, 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 it's it's a little bit intuitive, but mostly functional that they know, so.
So I guess you're saying there's some hidden costs associated with this little.
Yes. Yeah, on the back, it's, he had a little explanation of that, so.
But I encourage, in some of this electronics, they've gone sole source before, and, and you don't get any competi- competition, so you kind of get the whole gamut here, so I think this is a.
It's nice to see, it's nice to see several competitors.
Right. Well, yeah, they've got more bidders anyway, yeah.
So do I have a motion to approve the bid for the switch consistent with administration's recommendation?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion is approved?
Great, thank you. And Kathy Court, by the way, was forty-two years, so I want to make sure.
Forty-two?
Yeah.
I knew there was a four in there.
Yeah, so it's forty-two years, yeah. Just to make sure I didn't short her any years. It's been very appreciative years.
All right, any questions on AP order thirty-three? Seeing none, we'll move on to agenda item nineteen, the AP check to the Essex Community Educational Center in the amount of sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and four dollars. Any questions? Do I have a motion to approve the check to Essex Community Educational Center?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And the motion's approved? Announcements?
So April third and fourth are half-days for our K through eight students for parent-teacher conferences. Just note that that's happening. Kindergarten registrations are reported last time. Again, this is an important piece of information around staffing at our schools and welcoming our new kindergartners to our schools, so there's dates that are set up.
Seven, April seventh and eighth at Chamberlain, April ninth at Orchard, and April ninth and tenth at Rick Marcott. And so just want to make you aware of that and make sure people know that. Also alluded to earlier was on the, the annual, the fifteenth annual Career Job Expo is gonna happen, and again, Nancy LeVarne Way, the whole gym is full, and this is a great opportunity also, you know, for our students to connect with area businesses or businesses in the area, and also for them to connect with us. Usually, I, I meet with all of them. We offer them lunch during a brief break period, and then I get a chance to, to thank them and also talk a little bit about kind of the importance that they play in, in kind of our business and school partnership, so that will be happening. And then the four, four Vermont schools, the big picture program, South Burlington, has been recognized and has been invited to represent the state in the regional conference, so that's coming up, coming up. And then the redesign in action, which is also connected to the same, is happening, and again, I won't read all of that to you, but that's also there. Tomorrow night is the, another neighborhood learning conversation celebration. Again, the PACT is hosting that, and that's from five-thirty to seven in Cafeteria Two. And again, they'll be talking about graduation requirements and what seniors should know by graduation, team leaders will be working in smaller groups to make that happen, and.
Can I ask a question on that? Is there, is there an expectation of the group of how that information might be incorporated into the current ends?
Well, as you know, there's work that's happening. We, we're at the table, listening and, and responding, being part of the, the process. And I think, well, you remember when Jason Kushner and Patrick presented on that, that was a, a major part of our collection. As far as it factoring into our ends, you know, I think absolutely needs to. We have, we have this is some of the data that might help to affirm our work, although maybe not be fully quantitative. It can be informative to, to how we're doing, so. We, we want to listen. Again, I think this is really a great opportunity for our students in providing feedback and the community around these topics. So we are going to use the data.
I guess I'm asking, how is the leadership intending to use that information?
It's really looking at, we're, we're gonna use it. I mean, it's, it's, it was not set up in a formal way to, to, to inform our ends, but as a result of the role in work, it's definitely now part of the strand, or a strand that's gonna feed critical information into some of the things that we talked about earlier. You know, and from MTSS and how our systems are supporting our learners. So we, we've already received some from the past, and we're gonna keep using that, and I think that you might even see some of that in the, into the retreat work.
And just maybe by show of hands, which board members will be in attendance tomorrow? Who I will be?
I'm gonna try to come, but I'm on.
Okay, so we'll have some pretty good attendance tomorrow.
It sounded like it was kind of almost a summary of what they've done over the last couple of months, not.
That's what my understanding was, yeah. Okay, great, thank you.
And then the last is the, today, we had a student who was participating in the spelling bee, and we hope they did well and had fun, but they were competing today at, on the, competing for the top spellers, so. Just thought you should know that. We'll hopefully see how he did and hope him the best, so. That's all I have.
All right, we have our self-evaluation, which Martin will collate in record time here.
Yes, I will. Superintendent, feedback from the meeting with respect to the data reports we provide to board in advance of the meeting in support of deliberations and require action. There's a disagree and a no opinion. Board questions were first anticipated and second responded to in a thorough, timely manner. There were two disagrees and a no opinion. I'm trying to read the note that Diane wrote.
Oh, I think I wrote.
Dan wrote, sorry.
I wasn't here to get them, so I couldn't respond.
Oh, well, there you go. That's why there's no opinion.
So I couldn't have an opinion.
Well, believe two out of the four people you wouldn't have gotten. All right. On the other item, the board meeting evaluation, we have several no, four no opinions on moving stuff from the parking lot, because we haven't gotten it yet. And one disagreeing, the board sought to include staff, students, and community members in their discussions and in future meeting agendas, so we haven't done so for future meeting agendas. Diane?
Yeah, I mean, I was just.
No, no, I'm just curious.
Well, I mean, because we don't on a routine basis seek out.
Well, our students.
But.
But not all the others.
Not about future meeting agendas. That's why, did you see, Martin, I circled future meeting agenda. That's what I was responding to.
Well, that's how I changed my tone when I got to and in future. And we have a no opinion on the board's established linkage with, or input from the owners and sought data to improve their decision-making process, so.
So actually, as, as we consider these, it might be good to put on a, a retreat agenda, if not this upcoming one, sort of how our self-evaluation process is going and whether we feel it's adding value and we're taking action from it. Glad that, too. All right, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive session to discuss a legal matter and collective bargaining on the grounds where premature general public knowledge would clearly place the board at substantial disadvantage?
Aye, so moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
And we are adjourned. Thank you.